We'll call this meeting order to establish the form that 7:02 PM on December 27th, 2022 with Chris McGurk, Jeff Dyer, Todd Summers, and our reporter Nancy Beck. Two minutes for us to have to do two sets next time, since I took the minutes last time and totally forgot that I took those, so I didn't prepare them. Our last meeting was pretty bland anyways. So that'll lead us right to the Treasury report.
Okay, Commissioner's Report. I've been missing too, so I'm glad I can get back with you. We have about 11% of our taxes that come in, both the MNO and INS. They're really going to start coming in now. We should get quite a bit. We've already gotten quite a bit in December, and in January we'll get even more. You know, because we were sitting at like, oh, I don't know, parting anything for current, and we have $44,000 in current now. So we should be getting a lot more, but our expenses are low. There's only one item that I need to call your attention to because it's going to show as an overpay on the budget line, and that's under miscellaneous. That $39.60 was for that software. And I really didn't have anywhere else to put it. We can't necessarily put it under office expense because it's not the ESD. It's not the board's office expense. So I put it under that, and I'm really thinking about, I don't know, I hate to make a separate line item. And it's something that we're going to have to renew every year, so it's not something I can capitalize. So it does show that we're going to be out of budget in that, and we can take care of that, okay, with the budget amendment. So our receipts for the two months of this year, $46,000. And again, I said that's it. We're at 11%. And then our expenses are just 12, which is not even 5%. And so that gives us $34,000 over in the MNO account. On the backside, you'll see the INS account or debt service. And we've received $9,900 in our collections, and we've spent, paid out two payments, which are $15,000. So it shows that we're a little less, but that's kind of the way it is until we start getting our money in. The operating account has $190,000. The money market is over $100,000 now, and our interest coming in is like at $150 a month now, which is, it finally climbed up a little bit from actually getting some interest on that. And then the INS account is at $37,000. Our firehouse loan balance is $648,481. If you look at the payments, there's quite a few. Normally, you look all the way down till you get down to where it says my name, and that's all the normal payments that are made every month for our utilities and everything. And all of those, except mine, are handled online. And then you get, we have the appraisal district that came in. That's our first quarterly payment for them, Cowboy Pest Control. Parker's, I received a bill from Shelley that was for $75, and she said it was for filters. I wasn't sure if we were supposed to be paying for the filters or, I thought they said they had a bunch of them in the back room there.
They talked about maybe having some, but we should pay for them. I mean, it's our building. I mean, I just...
I know, but what comes under maintenance? I mean, what...
They're on their side.
The maintenance that they take care of. If you're renting a house from somebody, if you need filters for the air conditioner, are you going to go ask your landlord?
Landlord to give you some filters?
We just need to have a defined line so that I know when we get this, what is to be paid for by us. But that's down there to pay, $75 for six AC heating filters. And then the Burns and Anderson bill, that was the work on the sales tax thing that you were talking about. I think that's where you've been talking with him. Then Haney and Company, they're doing our audit, and they sent us a progress bill. The fire department's first quarterly payment is $44,375. It's been $36,000 in it. And then CDI, Jeff sent me their bill for the installment of the generator. I think this is a partial. There's still some hours to come. Jeff can kind of talk to you about that. But this bill is for $18,350, and that will be, that will be a capital expense. So we have $76,000 which goes to pay.
All right. And I'll talk about the Burns Anderson, which is not a lot to talk about if you haven't really done much, but I'll bring that up.
He's talked to you on the phone from what it looked like on the...
If there are no corrections, I'll accept the motion to decree that the Treasury report is presented in paid bills.
Make a motion to accept the Treasury report for a year's day ending November 30th, 2022.
Motion, a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
And I do have all those checks whenever.
Okay. Patrick, that brings us to you.
Okay. What does that bring me to give you?
Whatever you want to give us.
Did you get to say whatever you want to say?
Did you get a copy of the engine?
No, I did not.
Yeah, we just kind of throw the ball at y'all's park and whatever you want to talk to us about.
There's a little...
There is a little something on here.
Okay, I've got it right here.
Oh, you didn't have me right?
Okay, so the lady that just walked in is Viani, and evidently she's trying to get her child settled back there. So I'm going to read you what I've got. Currently in the bank, we have a bank balance of $40,715.41 in both our accounts for that We are in the middle of trying to do maintenance. Maintenance is costing us a lot of money because it appears that previous administrations, that was not something that they were looking at. So that's why our accounts are down by a little bit.
Sorry.
Okay, we're on accounts. Hey, everybody, this is Viani.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Hi.
Hi. I'm just filling in for Ms. Shelley as much as I can this evening, member of the auxiliary. I'm so sorry.
So in total, in grants, we've, we've only received so far this year $740. The new year for the grant projects has just started in October, and we've only had three or four firefighters go to school for us to get grant reimbursements. You have the rest of the remaining that we have there. Everything else is our standard bills that are, that we've been paying, and we're within budget. And obviously, we're going to stay within budget for the maintenance program, but that is going to be a big expense for us this next year.
Just general maintenance on all the different vehicles?
Trucks have not been, I found oil filters with 2017 dates on them. So that's been my project, and that's what I've taken up. For the runs for the month of November, we have 42 incidents with 31 personnel responding. 14 of those are medical, eight fire, six accidents, four utility problems, three hazmat, which is an oil leak or diesel spew from a motor vehicle accident, two unauthorized burns, one control burn, and one public service. I don't see total hours. You'll have to forgive me because I'm not familiar with this reporting program. So far this year, we have a total of 321 runs by the end of November. Last year at this time, we had a total of 502 runs. Our run volume is down this year, which is a good thing, even though we had a busy grass fire season throughout the summer. We've had 17 structure fires, 11 vehicle fires, 64 grass fires, and total acreage burn was 397 within the district. And we have had one civilian fatality over by the cemetery. That was in the paper, but for some reason, that's not on this report.
A rollover of some one-hundred?
No, no, it was a trailer house fire.
Oh, okay.
Frank, I don't remember the gentleman's name.
I don't know who you're talking about.
Yeah.
I don't remember who he was. I mean, he was, he was gone when everybody got there, right?
Yes, yes. We found him after we had the fire knocked down.
All right. About the term with the cause of that fire was?
No. It was, they brought out Bear County Fire Marshal's office, and they did an investigation, but everything was completely gone. By the time we got there, it was almost completely gone to the ground. So it was a big delay in the call, and trailer houses go pretty quick.
Well, that was like a 1950s trailer house.
Yeah.
It's old, it's all warped, the frame and everything.
Did she have anything else that she wanted to present?
She did say that there were a few things that needed to be signed off. The ESD contract payment from Ms. Nancy, I believe. And that Ms. Brenda will be needing a copy of the sign-in sheet with our members who attended.
Oh, yeah. I would have had to write a sign-in sheet.
It's right here.
I wasn't sure if it's, I was going to be able to get to the office to grab a sheet.
I would have been lost because I wouldn't have been able to help you out on that one.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to hand it right to you.
That was it. She just said that the report would be on your desk.
Got it.
That was it.
That was it.
She literally just sent me a paragraph of everything she needed.
Okay. Outside of that, anything else you want to add? I mean, just in general?
No. Training is going good. Our personnel numbers have come up. We have almost 30 people in the department now. And we, you know that we have EMT program in Divine and Hondo High School. We have Medina Valley High School and Ataya High School. Talking to Greg about potentially next year doing that. And we're starting an adult night class on the 7th here, and I think we have 15 people that are signed up to take that course. So we are becoming a very big training facility for the community, and people are just reaching out to us now, so.
And the training on the 7th, is that for what?
That's the start of the adult EMT class.
Oh, okay.
That's going to run on every other Saturday and Tuesdays and Thursdays in the evening here.
And they're paying you guys for their classes?
Yes. So is the schools. They're paying us for the classes. And so that's a revenue generator. I mean, obviously, there's expense with instructors and stuff like that, but that program has taken leaps and bounds, and Greg's idea is that he wants to be in every high school in the county. That's where he's trying to get this to go. And it looks like he's going to end up successfully doing that. So he brought me in to be the program director of the EMT program because of my background, and so he's getting us the jobs, and we're putting the classes together. Our high school classes are going very well. I think we have, at Divine, we have 22 students. I think we're going to drop two. Everybody else is passing. And in Hondo, we have 20 students, and it looks like all of them are going to make it through the year, so.
Cool.
That looks good.
Do you know anything about how their review of their books is going?
So we have, so we haven't gone to the book review yet for our finances. What we've done is TechSoup has a deal that's going to go through our accounts and clean up our chart of accounts.
No, I mean, we contracted with an accounting firm to do an audit of last year's books.
And Shelley has been talking to them, but we haven't moved forward. She hasn't moved forward with giving that to them.
We received the quote. We're just waiting for the board to give the AOK on it.
No, it's on.
No, no.
It's already, it's on.
This is, you're thinking of the TechSoup thing. So this is, this is the audit that, it's not, it's a review that they're going to do on our books.
Might as well say an audit. It's just like an audit.
Right.
I mean, everybody thinks of it as that, but we contracted, it's been two to three months ago, three months probably.
October.
Yeah, and I just haven't heard anything more.
Who is the, I'll take care of this tomorrow. Who is the company that you've contracted with?
It was, yes, Armstrong. And they had, he had been, the guy had been sending me copies of the emails back and forth with Shelley for a while, and then it was to the point where he was going to get a copy of the equipment file and go ahead and get started, and he told him what he needed to get, and then that's the last I heard, anything, and that was in October.
Okay, I will take care of that tomorrow, and then I'll...
Just want to know what the status is.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Usually you give them three months to do a review.
Right. I understand. And I'm sure that she has your phone number? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I will have that taken care of tomorrow, and I'll have her call you and let you know that that's moving forward.
Yeah, and if there's some sort of delay for some reason, let me know, but if it's the accounting firm, we need to know so that we can get on them to get to it.
And I don't have that information either way. I know that she was concerned about the, our chart of accounts because of so many different administrations has just grown phenomenally, and things are out of place. And so the idea was, I don't know about the accounting firm, but the idea was to get them in here to clean our chart of accounts up, I think, before she sent that, but it does need to happen. I didn't realize it had been that long.
I knew that she was working on it at that time, and she said that it shouldn't take much longer, that it was being done when we contracted with them. And she said it should make that much faster, which was true, but, you know, I thought that it should have been done initially.
Okay, I'll make that happen. And I apologize that it happened.
No, I just haven't heard anything, and I've been outside, I haven't asked.
Yeah, I feel like something has happened because I know Shelley's been talking to them, just don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have hours to go. Next morning. You're supposed to be finished in January.
Okay. All right. Old business, the only thing really was to talk about the sales tax, that warms tax, and us working on getting that done, which will have to be on the ballot in May, I believe.
April.
April, sorry, April. So I hadn't heard anything from our attorney, Ken Campbell, and so I called him, or I emailed him, just, that's usually the easiest way to get a hold of him. And his response was, "Trying to get to it ASAP. Sorry, have some clients with all-encompassing issues right now, beginning with the FBI and working down." So, nothing to do with us, but, you know, so I don't know. I mean, that's the last I heard from him.
And he had, I know that there was two firefighters killed.
I've heard that.
And he's working on that with that ESD also. They were involved in a vehicle accident with the fire truck, and both of them passed away, so.
Oh, wow.
So I, that wouldn't involve the FBI, but it doesn't surprise me. Things happen.
Yeah. So, I mean, I know he understands the timeline and all that we need to get on this, and so I suspect he's on it, he'll be on it, and get us moving the right track, so.
I know that I found the boundaries, and Greg sent him the meets and bounds for the district. Luckily, I drove to Hondo, and the lady was old time, and she goes, "Let me look in this drawer," and she pulled out, she goes, "Yours is the only one that I have out of all the ESDs in the county." I couldn't believe it.
My email I had was, "I can just check it to see if there's anything more needed from us. The fire department would like to start educating the public on what will be on the ballot. Do you have any advice?" And that was his response, so. I have a real answer.
Yeah, because the public's not pasted to the public.
Yeah, the public's going to have to be educated before it's passed, and for them to understand that it's not an additional tax in any way. It's just somebody in the actual district actually has to pay. It's already being paid, so we'll see where that goes.
So Nancy, in answer to your question, Shelley sent the text and said, "They have all that information." So she said she'll forward you the email that showed that we sent them that information, so I guess they're, it's in their court.
Ball's in their court.
Their court, yes.
Okay. I'll check with them and ask them how that came around. So basically, we're paying the sales tax because we're waiting on Ken Campbell?
Yeah. He has to walk us down that process, and there's certain things he has to do. And I know when we first sent him and told him we were doing it, he's sent some information to another gentleman that has to get involved in it, so he's, he kind of got the ball rolling, but he hasn't taken it any further since then.
He's a busy man.
It's probably the worrying too, on how it's going to be shown on the ballot.
Well, yeah, there's, I'm sure there's a specific way it has to go on there, but the thing is, is we as a board cannot sell it.
Right.
If somebody asks a question, we can give them, you know, what we know about it, but we can't sell it on people. The fire department's in a different position. They can go out there and do, you know, they have a little more leeway on how they can present it to people in different organizations, and, because the word's going to have to get out. You're going to have to go to all the little trail organizations around here, the Lions Club, all different things, and put this word out and help people to understand what it is.
That's the bottom line, is their understanding.
Yes, exactly.
I was the lead for the '06 successful push, so I studied up a lot on that.
Oh, and getting the SD in the first place?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I know you were involved in that. So this here is a little different, but it's the same.
Right.
It's the same thing, you still got to help people understand it. I'm going to ask Jeff, just to let you all know where we are on the generator. I spoke to him earlier, but just so you guys know where that's at.
Sending all the paperwork again to Medina Electric, and they said they'd get back to me in two weeks, and so this will be, next week will be the two weeks. I'm going to get Patrick all the information. He's going to hand deliver it tomorrow. And once we get that, then we're going to have to have an outage with Medina Electric to fix a couple of things in the disconnect that's out there. And then once we do that, we're about a week from finishing electrically, and then we've got about a two- to three-week wait or in-line to get the generator tested and started. But we don't want to do anything to it until they do that test and checkout, because that way our warranty would be void if we don't do that. So we're going to go through their system to get it done. And like I was telling Todd too, there is no oil. As far as I know, there's no oil in the generator, and there's no fuel in the generator. So until, they'll bring the fuel, the oil, the oil filters and all that, and they'll put all that on there and mark it down, and then start it up. Well, actually, they're going to do a load bank test, which is going to put it under a full load for four hours, and all the requirements that they have to do for the generator to approve it. And then once they do that, it'll be online and ready to go.
You have the key for it, right?
I don't think, I may have. I'll have to look and see. The guys may have the key.
Okay, just making sure that...
They did bring me the books the other day, and I was like, "Why did y'all bring them to me?" But I've got the books. I'll look for the key now.
And I did go talk to the fuel distribution company down there, and they're, they have go online.
Ms. Golden West, right?
Yeah, what she's saying is, is if we want red fuel, there's some process we're going to have to go through to get it. She goes, "If you just want regular diesel, just tell us, we'll come fill it out and send you an invoice." So I don't know if it's really necessary we get red diesel, I mean...
But y'all are a government entity like the schools, so you would be exempt from state taxes. We can't, even though we're tax exempt, I've tried this before, and like that, you don't qualify. You have to be a government entity. So that would save a lot of money.
Taxes, yeah.
On getting fuel.
Yeah, the tax, I don't think is a problem. It's just what kind of fuel you want.
Red diesel is cheaper.
Yeah.
Most of the time, yes. I agree. But not all the time. What kind of process you'd have to go through to get it, though?
I got to go online, and she made it sound like it was, like it wasn't their website, like it was the state website or something.
Probably is.
If we go on there and...
You have to get a red dye diesel. I've got one for my farm car, but the tax stuff, you've got to get them the paperwork so that they can eliminate the tax off.
They should have that one there in their office that you can design it. You just send them your things, saying you're tax exempt because you're a government entity.
So there's, no, we don't have like a tax number or nothing? We have to give them?
No, there's no, we have our lawyer ID number, but there's no tax number when you're a government entity.
Right, okay. Okay, well, I'll talk to them again, and, well, I'll go on and see what the red dye, what that entails, getting that.
Yeah, that's, for a farmer, it was like a 10-second, one-page deal. Put my name in, send it in, and they sent me a card saying I can buy it.
Okay.
Is yours just the regular tax exempt, ag exempt?
No, no, you have to have a red dye from the state.
To get a diesel.
You have to have a red dye diesel permit, and you just take it there, and everything's good to go at that point.
From the comp truckers' office, right?
Yeah, if you Google Texas red dye off-road diesel, then it'll come up, and it's really simple to do.
Yeah, all right. Just send myself some orders to do that.
And we've already approved so many gallons.
Yeah, we refused.
In October, and then we approved some gallons.
I asked her about that, and she said, I said, "We have to open an account or something." She goes, "Well, how often are you going to do it?" I said, "Probably maybe once a year." I mean, she's like, "Well, I don't have to really open an account. Just, either you can bring me a check," or she said, "She said they'll just fill it up and bill us for it, and we can pay it."
Okay.
Does that thing have a gauge on there?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's only like a 24-hour tank. It's going to run for 24 hours, and it's going to be going, shoo, second drive, yeah.
Yeah, so when we get it up and running, you can educate us on what we need to do.
Yeah, well, that's what the guy will do too, is do the training.
Okay.
Yeah, when they kind of do the training, we'll definitely have to have some people from the firehouse here to be involved in that.
Right.
Few people. Outside of that, I don't have anything else that I can think of.
I have a question because I, of course, I wasn't here in the November meeting, and so therefore I, I do not know what was discussed. And so I knew that I had emailed everyone Homer Delgado's resignation from the board, and so I just didn't, no, and I haven't put it in any of the minutes, and I guess it's going to go in your minutes for November. Okay. So that, and then...
So we got, yes, we got the resignation.
We're going to have to send that resignation to the Commissioner's Court.
Oh, the Commissioner's, okay.
To?
We did get the Commissioner's Court. We did get Homer's official resignation letter. We had two people that reached out to us, Patrick Borsier and Chris...
Davis.
Davis. I wanted to say Miller, and I knew that wasn't right. Chris Davis, just saw him this morning. Anyways, I was reminded, and I knew this already, but just kind of forgot about it. Patrick Borsier will not qualify because he does not live in our district.
Oh, really?
He lives in Ataya now. Yeah.
But my cousin's in Ataya, Medina County.
Yeah, but you're in our district.
Okay. Oh, okay, with the lines.
Yes, you're in our district.
Okay.
Patrick is not. He literally lives like in downtown Ataya.
I didn't realize that.
Well, he sold his house in Divine, probably, it should have been four or five years ago now, moved into his parents' house. And so that's where he lives. So, and I do know, because I had reached out to Jerry Beck in the Commissioner's Court a while back, when somebody else, if you do, you are supposed to live in our district if you're on the board.
Yeah.
And I did know that, and somebody reminded me that. I just, because he was on the ESD, I just kind of naturally thought, oh, he's good to go, and then I, their district encompasses Ataya. Ours does not. So that leaves us with Chris Davis. I did speak to Chris, and he is willing to serve on the board.
We have to... When we send that, we can do the same thing, but we have to send a letter to the Commissioners' Court recommending that they approve him, and then they approve him, and that's when he's officially a member.
Okay. So I have the letters, and I'll get ahold of... Who's in charge of the Commissioners' Court now?
The judge.
Is it Shearheart?
No, it's going to be Keith Lutz now.
Oh, Keith Lutz, that's right. He just got elected.
The gal up there that was Shearheart's...
Jennifer Adlong?
Yeah.
She's been there forever.
She's usually the one I send everything to, and she takes care of it.
Yeah, every time I call, I'm like, "Why aren't you retired yet?" She asks me the same thing. "Well, you're back with the vine."
All right.
Touche.
So he accepted Homer's resignation at the last meeting?
I don't know. Did you accept the resignation at the last meeting?
Since he did send it in writing.
Did we have it at the last meeting? We didn't have it yet.
Oh, okay. I was...
That's right, we actually didn't have it.
You need to actually accept his resignation.
So we need to accept that tonight.
And recommend that we... If that's what you want to do, that you send a recommendation to the Commissioners' Court, or you approve him, you know, based on whether the Commissioners' Court's approving. They don't ever turn us down unless they run something and find out he's a criminal or something.
Okay. So first off, I think we need to go ahead and have a motion in a second and vote to accept Rocky's resignation letter. I'm sorry, I've always known him as Rocky. He goes by Rocky to some people, and Homer is others. So Homer is his official name. Just to accept his resignation letter.
Okay. I make the motion, we accept Homer Delgado's resignation letter that he emailed.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, listen, carry that. And is there any discussion, or how do y'all feel about Chris Davis? Does everybody here know Chris Davis?
I don't know him.
You don't know him? Okay.
I don't think I know him. Do I know him?
Phil Baines sent him off, Kerry Davis is...
No, I don't think I know him.
He also serves on the school board. I don't know. He's been on that for a while. I don't know how long, but for a while.
He's just finished by his first. Three years, three years.
His business address and all is here in Divine, so I'm thinking he's around here fairly often, and it'd be easier for Nancy to get ahold of him. Again, when it comes to signing checks or whatever, if we need something like that. So I think he'll fit that bill of having one more person that can sign checks.
Oh, because he's local. Awesome.
Well, he's local sometimes. He is an appraiser.
Yeah, he's a real estate appraiser.
So he goes all around, you know? But he tries to be... He's always in town on Fridays, and then there's other times he's in during the...
See, look at that building that was next door to Charles?
Okay.
Yeah.
That's nice.
So, I mean, I'm fine with Chris Davis, just, I mean, let's just be honest, we don't have people jumping through the door, wearing their hands to be on the ESD board, you know?
I think he's gotten interested, because his son's in the apartment.
Oh, that's right.
I see, I miss that.
He's actually in the EMT program also, at the high school.
What's your son's name?
Blaine.
That one's Blaine. He has three sons.
I'm in...
It's his oldest son, yeah.
VBS, Vacation Mob School. That's where my son.
He has Blaine, Tanner, and Logan.
Oh, maybe not Logan.
So, that being said, if y'all are accepting of... At least submitting Chris's name to the Commissioners' Court, I would accept a motion for that as well.
There's got to be some kind of a letter written to them, right? To go swear him in?
Yeah, I don't know exactly what he has to say. I don't think it has to say anything special.
I'll just pull up the ones that we recommended.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We give his address and any information to him about him.
Make a motion to accept Chris, or to send in the paperwork for Chris to be sent out?
I have a motion to accept Chris Davis and to send his name for authorization to Commissioners' Court. Give the Commissioner... In a second.
Second.
Make a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. We'll send that out.
That's Kerry.
I've seen her at Hondo.
I haven't talked to Patrick Boursier yet, but I think he'll understand. I like the... I personally like the idea of Patrick, just because I know he understands ESDs and government procurement and all that kind of stuff. And I've asked him several times how he feels about what we're doing over here in our EMS program, EMT program, and he says he thinks it's fantastic.
Oh, he's a wealth of knowledge.
Yeah, so he was all about it. Okay. Anything else? No one wants?
Do we have an actual copy of the Homer's letter?
Yeah, he's saying the format. It's... Did you not get a copy of it, Nancy?
I may have some time, but, I mean, nobody's printed off a copy of it as well.
I did not.
Okay. Well, I'll make a copy of it and then send it, and do the letter to recommend Chris as his replacement.
Here's his letter. "I'm sorry, but please let this letter serve as my official resignation from my ESD board position. I have enjoyed serving on the board for the past few years, but my profession does not allow me the time necessary to fulfill my duties to the citizens of Medina County. I wish you all well, and it has been my honor to work with all of you. Homer Delgado." Do you have an answer?